Good evening, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. On behalf of my fellow Board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our April 8th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Serra of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting will also be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow, and similarly, all of our previous meetings are also currently available on the same platform, as is our custom. Before we begin, I ask that our members introduce themselves.
I'm Beth Cassavant.
Teresa Flynn.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlin.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
And again, I'm John Samia, Chair, and thank you for joining us this evening. First item on the agenda is actually Executive Session. The Board will now consider entering into Executive Session in accordance with the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Manager. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mrs. Conlin?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavant?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Board will now enter into Executive Session and will reconvene in open session. Back, thank you. Open session next. Item on the agenda under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to approve the minutes of March 18th, 2025 meeting, March 25th, 2025 meeting, and April 1st, 2025 workshop.
So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports, colleagues. Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one. I wanted to share that I recently participated in a mentorship program. The Leadership Next Gen Paid Fellowship Program is offered by the Coalition of Anti-Racism and Equity and Commonwealth Seminar. The program provides high school and college students from underrepresented communities of color with opportunities to learn and develop practical civic engagement and leadership skills, engage with their communities, and gain in-person, real-life experience in legislative offices. I had the pleasure of working with a young woman named Safa Khan, who has been present with us at our meetings for the last several weeks. She's joined me in some one-on-one meetings with Kevin and has offered some great insights and has asked great questions. I want to thank Safa for the time and hope that this is just one opportunity for us to get young people engaged and connected with our community and with our local government. So I just wanted to share that it was a pleasure to be a part of this program as a mentor and hope that others, you know, consider looking into, you know, ways that they can get engaged with us. So, thank you, Safa.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? I have two. Just a reminder that we hold office hours on the first Tuesday meeting of the month, our first meeting, and they are held from 5:30 to 6:30 across the hall, so it's an opportunity for residents to engage with usually two members of the Select Board to talk about whatever you'd like within purview of what we do. So we'd love to meet with you in a less formal setting as opposed to here in public participation. And the next item is to announce upcoming Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee Project Outreach Sessions as we approach the April 14th Special Town Meeting and the May 6th ballot question. The Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee is hosting outreach sessions to ensure that the community is well-informed about the product's scope, financial impact, and the essential role it plays in addressing facility challenges at the DPW garages and Town Hall. The outreach sessions are as follows. Tomorrow night, April 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the DPW garages at South Street; April 23rd, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the DPW garages at South Street; and April 24th, from 1 p.m. to 3 p.m. at the Shrewsbury Senior Center. These will be drop-in sessions, so residents can come in and go at it at their convenience. That's all I have. If there are no other items, the next item on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. The first item I wanted to provide information on is exciting that we have selected a consultant through the Shrewsbury Development Corporation to work on the town's first economic development plan. So work will get underway under the direction of the SDC with the consultant, RKG, that they've selected through the competitive RFP process, and we've received state grant funding that we'll be utilizing to cover the costs associated with this work, and we look forward to working with RKG, the Development Corporation, and staff to build the best outcome and plans that we can. A reminder, as I mentioned at your previous meeting, that we'll be changing the traffic flow pattern within Dean Park with the purpose of protecting pedestrians and making access around the main loop one direction, which will flow generally counterclockwise. Those changes, which are currently being signed, striped, and notified, will happen all before the end of the month, so please be careful when you're in the park and obey the new signs and paintings once they're up. We have electronic message boards alerting folks to that, and we hope this relieves some stress and concern and allows more people to use the park safer. And finally, on a very sad note this evening, Board members have to share the loss of a longtime town employee, Greg Honorato. Greg served most recently as the town's IT Director. He's been an employee with the town of Shrewsbury since 2004. His untimely passing today has impacted all staff, and our thoughts are with his direct colleagues in Selco and his family.
Next item on the agenda is under Public Comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31. To offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the Board's authority. Those wishing to speak regularly, at our regularly scheduled meeting should notify the Chair of the Select Board through the Select Board's office by the end of the Business Day on the Monday prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting by written correspondence or email at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. The request should include or must include first and last name, address, the organization being represented, if any, and the topic to be discussed. Tonight, we do have one resident who would like to speak with us this evening. I'd like to invite Mr. David Remington of 73 Stony Hill Road, who is, I'd like to discuss regarding the warrant article for the April 14th, 2025 Special Town Meeting. Good evening.
Good evening, David Remington, 73 Stony Hill Road. First of all, I'd like to say, you know, last summer, I toured the DPW facility, and I've been in this building many times. I think this project is overdue. The health and safety of the people in these buildings is paramount. And when I went through there, it was about a $22 million project, $15 million from utilities. It's gone up to about $42 million. And since we found out the extra $10 million, we haven't really talked about how the funding was gonna happen as an open, sort of, public, because the Finance Committee got, meeting was canceled. So as I look at that, I know we're talking about $177 of additional taxes, and I would like the committee to think about shifting that more towards the utility side of the house. The utility profits were to pay $15 million when it was a $22, $24 million project. Now they wanna pay $16 instead of $42 million project. I do think it's appropriate, you know, that the free cash is used to pay for the Town Hall. So the Town Hall basically is paid by free cash, and the sale of the land on Centec Boulevard, that doesn't do anything for our taxes. It's, so no tax raise on that. But the additional $38 million we have to raise, if the utilities now paid half that, or half the 42, raising it $5 million more from utility profits, it would drop it about $40 for each family. And I know $40 doesn't sound like a lot, but when you raise taxes for this, taxes for our regular taxes, fees are increasing, utilities are gonna be increasing every year. Then you put in this whole, an economy I know, I know people are being laid off. I think it shows the support that I feel for this project. So I went out and talked to people. Everyone wants this project to happen, but it shows that we are thinking of all those additional impacts upon them. And every time the project went up, do we need to shift it onto the people, or can we find an alternate way of doing it? The great thing is about utility profits are, utilities are gonna go up if this project happens or it doesn't happen. So it's not giving an additional cost to people that would not have happened if this project didn't go. So we're able to have everything we want, lower it by $40, utilities are gonna go up as they were, so I think everyone gets what they want, and it shows the people out there that we're really looking into, how can we give the least amount of impact to them and still provide all the safety and everything else we can do in this community. So I hope that we can change that in the final warrant, shift over some of those costs to the utility profits, and lower the impact upon people for the tax increases. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under Financial Business, is an update on Quarter 3 for Fiscal 25. It's an update, Mr. David Snowden, Assistant Town Manager for Administration and Finance. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. How are you?
Well, thanks. Welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Call that up, Dave? All right. Good evening. So, here we are at the third quarter of FY26, and thought this would be a good opportunity to provide an update of the financials, both expenses and revenues for the general fund and the utilities, year-to-date, and at the end, we can sort of also compare how that looks to last year and maybe see, have a little bit of a snapshot of maybe how ARPA funds had a play. So, if we look at this first slide here, we have the general fund revenue, which is broken out by taxes, net state aid, and local receipts. So as of Quarter 3, we've received about 77% of the revenue, and this is on par with the previous years, as we'll see. Tax collection continues to be right around $28 million a quarter, net state aid, again, 6.3, and local receipts, you do see an uptick, and this is quite common at this time of year because of Commitment 1. Next slide, please. So this is the annual town meeting budget, less the school appropriation, and we've expended, at this point in time, about 75.54%. This does include carryforwards, and since a big portion of this budget is also salary and personnel, it does make sense that we are spending sort of in line as time proceeds. Next slide. All right. This one, sorry, there's a lot going on here, but I wanted to give a snapshot of the utilities, their revenue and expenses on the same slide. So, right now, the top, the top four, has the revenues for each utility, solid waste. We've received about 67.5% of the revenue year-to-date, water is 75, sewer is 89, and stormwater is 78%. So some of this may be the timings of billings. And then now, if we go below, the utility expenditures, right now, solid waste has expended about 63% of its appropriated budget, water 51%, sewer 61, and stormwater 28. And sometimes, these numbers fluctuate depending on warrant articles and the timing of those If we go to the final slide, this will be a snapshot of the revenues and expenses, so the first four lines are showing you the revenues as they're broken out. We're very on par with the taxes as compared to FY24. Net state aid, slightly higher, that may just be a matter of timing. Local receipts were a little less, but we also have moved to a higher level of appropriation of local receipts. We've been trying to ratchet it up as the economics in the area have shown us that local receipts have been strong, we've budgeted higher amounts. So this is sort of in line. And again, if you look at revenue in total, 77.64% versus 77.1%, very similar. And the way I consider this is, you know, seeing how ARPA dollars have supported both the revenues and expenses in the previous year, and you can see that again in expenses below 74.11% versus 75.54%. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the intent of this is to sort of provide greater transparency into the expenditures and revenues of each financial and fiscal year.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Dave, do you see any risks at all in our budget to what's going on federally, or any concerns if the economy were to slow down? Do you see any immediate potential ripple effects in our budget?
As a personal individual, I have concerns, but I have, we haven't seen so much yet. Like, we're trying to keep our ear to the ground and be aware as much as possible, but, yeah.
No immediate, nothing, nothing funding?
Nothing immediate.
There's no, we haven't heard anything, we're not at the point of 9C cuts or anything like that. We're, that's something, okay?
Yep.
And then in terms of local receipts, any particular trends within the categories that you see either a risk or an opportunity, or looking at it, it's where you'd expect it to be across the board, understanding year-over-year, we had an increase?
Yep. I mean, MVE is the single largest one, so that both makes me feel confident and concerned at the same time. So that may be an indicator if the market does shift. We may see a change there, especially with the tariffs. Investment income has remained to stay steady. Our meals and hotel excise are doing really well. So our departmental fees in those areas are doing, consistent in doing well, but where MVE is such a large portion of it, I do have some concerns, but it's still performing well.
But this year's been pretty strong.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question, just, you know, as markets fluctuate, where does that leave us with retirement funding?
I did have, I don't have the firm numbers, but the Retirement Board will be meeting in a week or so. We are expecting a loss at this point in time. I don't have solid numbers at this point.
But there's no recommended change in fiscal projection, too, for funding? That would be something that we would have to look at next year?
Correct.
To keep it whole?
Yes, we do our actuarial analysis as of January 1 each year.
Yep.
And we're still above 95% funded, because calendar year 24 was a good return year, so TBD for this year.
I remember the actuarial presentation that goes to the Finance Committee. Is that this year, or did it happen last year? I can't remember. It's like every two years.
So the Finance Committee normally reviews our general investments at their June meeting. I'm not sure what cycle we are on with the actuarial analysis of the Retirement Board, but I know the Retirement Board will review the analysis for the first time at their upcoming meeting.
Correct. And their understanding intention is to maintain the FY26 appropriation as we have it, and if we were to consider any changes, it would be for '27 or '28.
Yeah, I just want to be kept updated on that. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Mizikar, anything else for you? Thank you, Mr. Snowden. So next item, no action required, as it's an update. Next item on the agenda is to review fiscal projection 2 for fiscal year 26. Is this you or Mr. Snowden? Mr. Snowden, back for this.
All right. Good evening. Welcome again. So, we wanted to provide a snapshot, an update on fiscal projection 2 as it's progressed throughout this budget process. We'll look at the budget as an overview, we'll look at the revenues and expenditures, and has, they have been updated since fiscal projection 1, and we'll also look at some adjustments in the municipal and utility budgets. Second slide, if you can just, all right. So here is the revenue by category. What we have broken out is FY25's budget, the revenue manual, fiscal projection 1, and then now fiscal projection 2. The difference in total revenue is 2.2 million. Some of this was very much anticipated, as the other available funds increased 1.8 million, and that's reflective of the CPC appropriation and the CPC projects. So those are more solid numbers we have, the numbers that they will receive through taxation, and then the numbers that they will appropriate to projects. Utility revenue has increased slightly. Local receipts, we brought up a little bit, in line based with our data, and then the use of free cash is reflective of some other items that we'll discuss later in the operating If we go to the expenditures by category, again, you'll see an increase of 2.2 million over FP1 for fiscal year 26. If we start at the bottom, we have the capital improvement plan, which was an increase of This takes into consideration the comprehensive DPW vehicle replacement plan, wherein the entire DPW team reviewed all the vehicles and set a prioritization list. We initially, I think, tried to get them around a $250,000 budget, and there was this part of one other vehicles that bumped this up a little bit, so we thought it made sense to continue that, that plan as they presented it, and to fully fund that. So this $24,000 increase in the capital improvement plan. Warrant articles here, you see 1.9 million. The vast majority of that, again, is the CPA articles, which was the 1.89 million. And then there is $15,000 for the electronic voting, and then the $35,000 for the School Building Committee. Utility expenses, $120,000. This is reflective of safety training, which will be funded out of the water and sewer budgets. There's also the water stabilization support and the adjustment of the indirect costs across the utilities. And lastly, the municipal expenses, $163,000. We'll go into these in greater detail in the next slide. This is, includes updated electrical and streetlight rates as approved by the Selco Commission, and I guess we'll go through each one on the next slide, so I don't have to make them up as I go. All right. And, all right. Excellent. So here is a comprehensive list of the changes as they apply to departments for fiscal projection 2. $3,250 for an archive social subscription. This is a tool that Taylor Galusha, the Communication Coordinator, has been using, and has, we've seen significant use, and this is sort of this updated cost we've received. As we go through any budget process, we review and we comb through and refine, and this there is an updated vehicle stipend for the Human Resources Director. We received updated audit requests from the Accountant Office for $1,000. We were able to reduce the previously identified Climate Action Plan Fund by $35,000. $116,000 for electrical rates, as I previously mentioned. And then we started to centralize some of the costs related to, oh gosh, I'm gonna, I think it's medical and drug testing, under the Public Works Administration Department as a whole. So we are pulling those from other departments, so that's why you see a reduction of 700, 2,500, and that's being brought into the Public Works Business Administration. An increase of $72,800 for the street lighting, and then lastly, $500 for the Communications Officer stipend. Next slide, please. All right, the utility changes. We were able to make an adjustment to the separate appropriations for solid waste and reduce it by 5,000. And then the DPW safety training program is split 50/50 between water and sewer at $12,500, and there is also the $100,000 appropriation to the water stabilization account as per their financial plan. And that's the overview we have at this point in time. I am, I'm happy to answer any questions. Justin, maybe we could leave it on either Slide 3 or 4, if there's any other questions
Any questions at all?
So the two separate Selco rate increases, right, one for public buildings and one for street lighting, this is Selco's attempt to kind of right-size what we're, what we're paying for electric rates? Like, can you explain to me, like, why there's an increase?
Yeah, of course. They're, they are separate, so there's the streetlights and the electrical for all the facilities in town. So, yes, in some aspect, it's right-sizing for the costs of service provided to all the municipal facilities and the streetlights throughout town. So it's right-sizing their operations and their financials.
And these are charges that have been increasing over time?
Correct.
Yeah.
May I ask a follow-up?
Yeah, Michelle, go ahead.
Are these increases in line with what we've seen in previous years, or is this a significant change from previous years?
I, we often had not seen many increases in the Selco electrical or streetlight budgets in maybe 2015 through 2022. So we've seen some changes since, and I think that's reflective of the, of the right-sizing that needed to be done, but so it is significant, and it's obviously felt by the town, but it's not something we see every year.
Is this, do we anticipate seeing similar changes in subsequent years?
Well, my understanding that the Sewer Commission, I mean, apart, apologize, so Light Commission voted a rates that these would take us through all of FY26, calendar 26, and I'm not sure if there's any rates intended past that, but this is what they voted at that time.
Okay. Just to follow up on that, like, understanding that we have to kind of budget, right, now for a fiscal year, if they have a off-cycle to us rate increase, is there some sort of agreement where we know upfront?
Happens.
Are we gonna be responsible for increases that happen outside of our ability to budget for the fiscal year ahead of us?
I think, that's a tremendous, that's a very good question, and part of that is improving the negotiations and communications between Selco and the town. We are, as this was a large increase, we are trying to find ways to mitigate that in the future and seeing if we can be at the table when future rates need to be discussed, and if we can, as we've done with the Water and Sewer Enterprises, roll them over for a few years, if we can do something similar. So that is the intent moving forward, yes.
Yeah. It's a pretty big.
Yes.
It's a pretty big number to absorb, right, in an operating budget that's already pretty lean?
Correct.
You know, there's things that we aren't able to do, I'm sure, because we need to absorb these increases that are much higher than what we've seen in years past, and I hope that we can work with Selco to try to make it more even, so we can better anticipate and better budget for the increases that are no doubt necessary, but just something that we're not used to having to account for.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I think you're correct.
Thank you.
Teresa?
If you could just break it down for me. How much of this, I mean, we know that Selco increased rates, so how much of this is due to the rate increase? I guess I'm not familiar with what our agreement is, like, do we not have a set rate? Do we negotiate the rate increases separately than the rates that apply to residents? Can you just break it down for me?
I'm just gonna pull up some backup information for myself.
And I agree with my colleagues, I think that if we don't currently have anything in the agreement where there's sort of a not to exceed or something, a provision, I do agree that that's something that we should look to negotiate.
I'm gonna do the best I can to answer this, and I asked the Town Manager to step in if there's anything I missed, or we can get more information from Selco afterwards. So, my understanding is the rates are adjusted similar to how we would be adjusting the water and sewer rate, so they have different customer class, whether it's residential, commercial, or municipal. We are under a current contract where the rates are X for a period of time, but they are reflective and of the cost of service and the cost of business. I do think that there are some external factors that have led Selco to require to increase their rates, but to your first point, we don't have like an agreed set limit for any year. The rates are sort of set on an annual basis or multi-year basis.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I answered it fully. I'm trying to turn off my computer so it doesn't keep dinging.
I mean, part of this, I could recognize if the town was getting a deal, like, we were getting this heavy discount, and we're sort of, you know, having to adjust that, that discount. It's just not clear to me how much of this is due to the rate increases or how much additional is being passed through to the town.
That's a great, okay. So as we've, again, we've done with the water and sewer rates, we try to determine what is the revenue target or the cost of service per a particular customer class. In some cases, the town has been undercharged based off of its, its total usage for electricity. Streetlights are a little more difficult because we do have a, a, um, an assumption that we use to calculate the costs. And with the technology going in, we'll soon be able to see if that assumption is correct. And we can then adjust the rates because we'll be able to turn lights on and off and see how much we're actually using. But if I look at the cost of service for municipal, it was about $31,000 under what the actual, what the town paid under what was actually the cost to provide that electrical service. And then the street lighting is a little more significant, maybe about on the order of like 20%. But again, that's based off the estimated usage.
Okay. The pilot payment has, remains the same, correct?
Yeah. Pilot as in?
The payment in lieu of taxes that we get from Selco yearly, right? So we're actually getting less because we're paying more. And I just feel like we haven't really talked about this before because it hasn't really been an issue before. And I think that there's an opportunity here for greater communication between this board and Selco in an opportunity to make sure that, you know, we're paying for our electricity, right? But also that we are clear as to the cost increases because we really do have like this opportunity to budget for it and then make any changes that we need to make at the fall special town meeting. And outside of that, it's going to be what a reserve fund transfer from the finance committee. But, you know, there's only so many dollars there also. So being able to plan for this is really important as it's a change
Correct.
to the status quo from previous years.
Any other questions? Thank you. Carlos?
I have a question. Thank you for the presentations. Capital improvement plan, seeing a difference there, what is accounting for that?
Oh yeah, so I may have said that up. Exactly. I spoke through that quickly, but in fiscal projection one, we were still working with DPW on their vehicle replacement plan and what that would include in totality. So we put aside a, a ballpark number. And when they completed their study, about 24,000 was additionally requested to cover the cost of the vehicles that were identified through that plan. So I can pull up the exact list of vehicles if that's what you're looking for, but it's all associated to the.
I think that's, yeah, that's helpful. Just wanted to understand that a bit more. And then just one more. The other funds identified for the climate action, what were those? Is that, was that a grant?
We, that was through the planning and economic development. And it wasn't a grant. We were going to be funding that through, you know, free cash. And it was going to be through an O9 account. And after they got the updated information, less was actually required, so we were able to reduce it by 35,000.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Muzikar, anything? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Snowden. Very helpful. Next item on the agenda, under new business, to review and act to recommend the warrant article for the April 14th, 2025 special town meeting. I'll invite Mr. Patrick Pitney, Chair of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. Good evening.
Good evening.
Introduce others who are with you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you again for having us this evening. My name is Patrick Pitney. I'm Chair of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. Joining me this evening from our design team, we have Amy Dunlap and Rick Almeida from HKT Architects. From our owners' project manager team, Mr. Steve Theron. Mr. Tim McInerney, our DPW Director. And other members of the committee include Beth Katzvan from the Select Board, Keith Waldinger, who is not able to join us tonight, he's away at a conference. And at-large members, Steve Walsh and Mike Liberty. We're here tonight to present you with the details of Article One of the special town meeting for April 14th. We will also be making this, this presentation to the finance committee on Thursday night. And this time, this presentation for town meetings consideration is the result of eight to nine months of work that the committee has put in, comprising approximately 30 meetings at this point, and from the entire project team, hundreds of hours of work. We feel this is the most comprehensive and fiscally responsible approach to solving the critical needs of the DPW facility on South Street and the renovations in Town Hall. I'm going to keep it really short tonight for myself because I'm going to hand it over to Amy, who can get into the details of the project for you to consider. And we'd be happy to take any questions after. Amy?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. I'm going to talk to you a little bit first about the existing conditions at the DPW. The slide you see up here, we've got some photographs. The DPW is currently operating out of three buildings at 205 and 211 South Street. The top building that you see there, that's the water and sewer building, that was built in the 1950s. And really, it's beyond its useful life at this point. And part of the, the project that we are working on right now involves demolishing that building to make way for a new addition. The building in the middle there, that's the DPW garage, that was built in 1976. That building has a number of deficiencies and issues with it, but that can be renovated. And the plan is to do just that, to renovate it so that we can upgrade the systems to support the current and future operations of the DPW. At the bottom there, that's the salt and sand shed, that was built in 2017, that's in good condition. And as you know, the DPW also operates out of this building on the second floor as the DPW administrative staff and leadership. And that is a challenge for the DPW to have those folks at this facility while they have other folks over at the South Street facility. It impacts communications, it impacts oversight. And ideally, they would be located together on the same site. And in doing so, we also are able to free up space in this building, which is desperately needed for other activities, other, other uses. Next slide. So a little bit more about the conditions at the DPW garage. There are a number of deficiencies there. There are deficiencies with the, the envelope, the walls, and the roof. In the bottom right-hand corner there, you see a photograph of looking at the underside of the roof. There's staining which indicates that there's leaking, and that's throughout the building. You see roof leaks throughout the building, there's minimal insulation there. The insulation has gotten wet over time, it's lost its efficiency. There is glazing all around the, the building. When you go there, you can see windows just under the eaves that are supposed to allow natural light in. That's deteriorated, it doesn't allow as much light in, it's not in very good condition. There are a number of safety and health issues such as lack of proper exhaust systems and detection systems for carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide, which are byproducts of exhaust and are health hazards to individuals. Most modern garages have detection systems so that when elevated levels of those gases are detected, exhaust systems kick in, clean that air, get it out of the space so it doesn't cause any health problems. But those systems are not adequate in the existing building. There is a lack of proper workspaces, a lack of storage spaces, a lack of employee facilities. You can see in the upper left-hand photo there, that's actually where folks have their lunch. It's right in the middle of a garage space. You can see equipment hanging on the wall behind them. It's just not an adequate space for a modern workforce to be working out of. There is a lack of accessible toilet rooms, shower rooms. There are no shower facilities for female staff. The finishes are worn and deteriorated throughout the buildings. And the fuel island, we talked about last time we were here with you. The fuel island is, features in-ground tanks, they're over 30 years old. They could at some point in time deteriorate, and that could be a larger issue. And so part of the plan here is to replace those with above-ground tanks so that there isn't a, a future environmental issue with those. Next slide. Here at the Town Hall, the front portion of the building, Town Hall, was built in 1966. The portion of the building that we're in right now is an addition that was built in 1997. There are a number of deficiencies here that can kind of be categorized into life safety, which is sprinkler systems. This portion of the building does not have any sprinkler systems. Part of the plan is to extend the fire suppression system into this portion of the building. There are issues with the fire alarm system that need to be upgraded. There are accessibility issues throughout. There are toilet rooms that do not have clearances necessary for, for wheelchairs, transaction counters, where members of the public go to interact with, members of your staff are not handicap accessible. Those need to be addressed. There are issues with people who are trying to approach the building in a wheelchair. Walkways that are not accessible, they don't have adequate slope. The sidewalks are not level enough for people in wheelchairs. The entrances do not have the proper clearances for folks. So all of that needs to be addressed. There is an aging and inefficient HVAC system. The HVAC system in the building was installed in 1997, it's nearing the end of its life. That should be replaced at this time. The lighting systems also don't meet current code standards and are inefficient by current standards today. And when all this work gets done, then there is hazardous materials that need to be addressed. There's asbestos in some of the ceilings, there is asbestos in some floor tiles underneath carpet. And as soon as work starts to happen, all of that needs to be abated. And in general, as we said, the building is overcrowded, there's a lack of meeting spaces, there's a lack of, of storage spaces. And by moving the DPW out, that helps to address some of those concerns. So the design process for this project started last year. And like most design projects, it starts with a space needs assessment. And that is when the design team comes in and they start to do field observations and have meetings with staff to find out what their actual needs are. For any project like this, it's balancing what the design professionals know are industry standards and best practices with the unique needs of the users. Every town we go into has similar spaces, but what their workflows are like is different. And that's what you're really trying to understand when you're doing programming, is how does this individual department work? And how can we then tailor the space to meet their needs and to, to be similar to what we see in other communities who have upgraded their facilities? And so that's the kind of work that happens in the space needs program. It's a really, it's an iterative process where we have meetings with the end users. We develop programs where we, we start to lay out some of the spaces that they need. We have review sessions with them. And then you move into the conceptual design where you start to test all of those assumptions by putting plans together. You test the adjacencies, you make sure that the spaces that you're designing are going to meet the unique needs of the department and are going to allow them to operate efficiently and, and how they, how they need to operate for their work. From there, we move into the, you can go to the next slide. Move into the later stages of design. And this is when my firm, HKT, became involved in the project. In November 2024, the town asked us to join the team and to take the conceptual designs that were designed by the previous designer to the next stages and develop them into design development and construction documents. So our team of engineers and architects got on board and we visited the sites in the buildings. And we started to further the, the design. We took the plans, we started to come up with some different options. For things that we saw that might work a little bit better, we started to come up with some different exterior design options for what the building would look like. And all the time, meeting with the town staff and user groups to make sure that everything that we proposed would meet their long-term needs in the project. We never want to design just for today, we're always looking to the future so that this is a building that will support the needs of your community well into the future, 20, 30, 40 years looking out. We then moved into design development, which is the phase when we start to look more closely at details. We look at HVAC systems, electrical systems, we look at materials and make sure that we're proposing things, again, that are going to be durable, they're going to be low maintenance, they're going to work for your community. And then on to construction documents where we start really detailing things and putting together specifications and figuring out how these projects are going to be built. When we got the, the construction documents about to 60% completion level, that's when we brought our professional cost estimator in on, on the project to take a look. And when the construction manager, Fontaine Brothers, who's done a lot of work with the, the town before, they were brought on board and they also took a look at the drawings and put an estimate together. So with our professional cost estimator and Fontaine putting estimates together, we went through a process that's known as reconciliation. And that's when the estimators, they do their estimates, they come up with their numbers, and then they get in a room together and they start to discuss what they saw in the documents, what they're seeing in market forces, what they're seeing for how busy contractors are, how the prices are trending. And through that process, they make sure that they're really, they're coming up with estimates for the same project. They're making sure that all their assumptions are the same. And so what you get out of that is two numbers that are very close. They're not necessarily exactly the same, but you have confidence that it really accurately represents where your project is. And those are the numbers that we're bringing forward to you today to talk about the cost. The next, the next slide. So this is an image of the proposed site plan for the DPW. So the plan is to demolish the water and sewer building, which in, on this site plan would sort of be in the lower left-hand side where we're showing parking right now. And that will provide room for us to build an addition onto the existing DPW garage building. The DPW garage building would then be renovated as well. We would demolish the existing fuel island and put in new above-ground tanks and a new fueling station. Those would happen behind the existing DPW garage building. The benefits for this plan are numerous. It really improves the overall site safety and circulation around the site. There's a better separation of public vehicular traffic and DPW operations traffic. And then we have an area for future recycling and yard waste drop-off and composting. The next slide. This is the proposed floor plan. The color codes are the, the different divisions within the, the DPW. The pink, yellow, and green areas represent the existing DPW garage on the right-hand side of the plan. And then the gray and the blue areas are the new addition that we're proposing for the building. The blue is the water sewer department, so those are the folks that would be moving from the building that's going to be demolished into this building. The yellow is the fleet maintenance, that's expanded. The green is the, the parks and cemetery, and then the pink color is the highway department. Focusing in a little bit on the gray area in the middle, which is common spaces. There are a number of things here that are of note. One of the, the things that's really going to benefit the community is the common rooms, which are the two rooms right up front. Those are for DPW staff to have meetings, they are for break rooms, they're for training sessions, things like that. But it's also going to be the designated polling location in this building. There's also updated locker rooms, there's a bunk room for folks who are out plowing after hours. If they need a place to ra, to rest, they can go in there and do that. The next slide. This is the second floor plan of the DPW. And this is where all the, the orange area is where the DPW administrative staff would be. All the folks that are in this building right now in the Town Hall would move over and they would be able to have that, that communication and operational oversight that is lacking now with the, the entities being in the different, different locations. Next slide. This is a view of the building from the northwest, from the parking area. You can see the two-story addition here. And then to the left of that is the new water and sewer wing. And the materials here that we're proposing are sympathetic to what the existing building has. We're proposing a masonry veneer, which is going to be a durable material. It's going to be in keeping with the, the color and a similar look to what the existing building is. The accent color there, the darker color, is a corrugated metal panel siding. All the windows are high-performance thermally broken aluminum frames with triple glazing that would meet the Massachusetts Stretch Energy Code requirements. The horizontal clear stories, which are the, the horizontal band of windows under the roof eave, are going to be very similar to what's in the existing building, but improved. It allows that natural light to come into those garage spaces with a very efficient thermally broken clear story system. Next slide. This is another view from the west as you would enter into the building. Again, Again, all of these materials are durable, low-maintenance materials that are sympathetic to the existing architecture of the building. So one of the things we always want to remind people when we're talking about these DPW projects is that this is truly more than just a garage building. This building is designed to meet the current and the future needs of the Shrewsbury DPW. That includes appropriate, safe, efficient workspaces for the town's DPW staff, including offices, break rooms, locker rooms, meeting spaces, and a bunk room. The operations areas are designed to create a safe environment for staff with appropriate exhaust systems to deal with carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide from the vehicle exhaust. And you need to remember that these buildings house millions of dollars of the town's assets that include trucks, tools, equipment, and materials. Those need to be maintained and protected in order to continue serving the town's needs. There'll be fuel containment areas. There'll be oil grease separators, trench drains, adequate storage. And again, all of these materials are going to be designed to be durable and withstand the heavy use inherent in a DPW project like this. So the town hall renovations include upgrades to meet ADA accessibility requirements. There are renovations to a number of toilet rooms, which is sort of the the cyan color represents the toilet rooms throughout the the building that are going to be upgraded. There are transaction counters again where the public meets with staff that are going to be upgraded to meet accessibility requirements. And on the left-hand side, you see the first floor plan with a site plan superimposed on it. All of those light orange colored areas are walkways and entrances that are going to be upgraded to be handicap accessible as well. Life safety systems will be updated, including extending the sprinkler system into the original nineteen sixty-six portion of the building and upgrading the fire alarm system. The HVAC system installed in nineteen ninety-seven will be replaced with a more efficient electrified system. The lighting will be upgraded to energy-efficient LED light fixtures. And again, through these rep- these renovations, we'll be abating the hazardous material, the asbestos in the building that's encountered. So the ultimate goal of this project and the work at the DPW and the town hall has been to optimize these facilities to meet the town's current and future needs. Renovations and additions at the DPW will provide the staff with safe, code-compliant working spaces that meet the operational needs of the department. Again, we're protecting millions of dollars of the town's assets here and creating a facility with adequate storage and appropriate wash facilities that will allow the DPW to maintain and protect these assets and extend their life expectancy. And moving the DPW staff out of the town hall will not only help improve the DPW operations and communications and oversight, but will free up that space that's so valuable here. Addressing the life safety deficiencies, approving energy efficiency, and resolving accessibility issues at the town hall will allow the building to better serve the residents, staff, and visitors of the town of Shrewsbury. So the next steps, as you said earlier tonight, we've got some public information sessions and outreach sessions coming up in April and May at the DPW and at the senior center. We encourage folks to come out and learn a little bit more about the project and come and ask us questions directly about the work that's going to be done. We have our special town meeting and town election that are coming up. And then following the successful vote at town meeting and the ballot, we're going to be completing construction documents and going through the necessary permitting phase. Fontaine Brothers, again, who is the CM on this project and who you've worked with before. By bringing them on board early, they're really becoming part of the design team through these early stages. They're someone who's going to help us to control cost. They're going to work with us to look at constructability of the systems. There'll be another phase of taking cost estimates. They'll be working on a cost estimate as well as our professional cost estimator. We'll go through that reconciliation process again. And that again, will make sure that we're controlling costs and we're staying on target as we complete the construction documents before we go out to bidding. Bidding is scheduled for fall of this year. And we're hoping that construction then would be complete by October twenty twenty-seven. And and closeout would be completed at that time. And the DPW staff would be able to move over into the new building at that point in time.
So I think at this point, Mr. Chair, Mr. Snowden will go through the financials of this.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
All right. I so wanted to provide some visual snapshots and some updates to some of the information that was sent out to town meeting members prior to the special town meeting. Sometimes pictures can tell a much better story. So the the total project costs at forty-two million, thirty-eight million, or roughly eighty-nine point six percent of that is representative of the work that will be done at South Street. And the remainder, four point four million, or approximately ten percent, is associated to the town hall. Next slide, please. So now if we want to take the town hall and further break out, provide a visual a visual representation of what we just went over, that four million, four hundred dollars can be broken out to renovations and life safety, of which sixty-three point seven percent, or two point eight million, is associated with the life safety and thirty-six percent is associated to the renovations of town hall. If we take a similar look at DPW now, twenty-seven point six million is associated with new construction. That's a little under three-quarters of the project. Renovations represent about twenty-six percent, or nine point nine million. And the demolition costs associated with this project are about four hundred and forty-six thousand, or about one point two percent. Now, now, we want to take a a look at what does this look like for the the average taxpayer? And what we have here in the the first column that's not labeled is the percentage of home value. So the the average or mean percentage of homes based off the FY twenty-five tax bill is seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Twenty-five percent of the homes are under five hundred and eighty-four thousand. And seventy-five percent of the homes are around nine hundred and fifty-one thousand. In column number, labeled number two, annual tax bill, that is the annual total tax bill, not just the debt, but the annual total tax bill for that associated home value. And column three is providing the projected tax bill impact of this project at the peak year, which is fiscal twenty-seven, when compared to their current tax bill for residents at this time. So for the average home, this project would have a max or a projected peak of fifty-one dollars compared to their tax bill at this time, which is less than point six percent of their total tax bill. It's not meant to diminish it, but we're trying to basically have a good way to understand what does this look like? So if we go to the next slide. Now, as this project has evolved, we've been able to work with our financial advisors and, you know, get the best possible figures possible. The yellow dotted line represents what was, I'm sorry, it's pretty poor to see, represents what was presented at the special special town meeting in November. And that was the budget model. We were going to be borrowing a little bit earlier. And this model represents us holding the tax bill level at seven hundred and fifty-six dollars for the average homeowner. Again, as I mentioned, as the project has evolved and working with our financial advisors, we are now able to have the peak impact aligned with that in twenty-seven. So a significant amount of debt is rolling off, and that's represented in the blue chart. That's the the debt of the on the tax bill that's rolling off. And that's how we're able to layer in this project. And I just want to make sure that this is aware, that this is not the entire tax bill. This is the portion of the tax bill that's related to the debt of the average single-family home. Now, this is a representation of the utility impact based off of the voted water rate increases by the water commissioners and the sewer rate increases voted by the sewer commissioners. We have the quarterly water and sewer rates based off of four consumption bands. These consumption bands represent twenty-five, fifty percent, seventy-five, and ninety-five percent of consumption per quarter. So most residents are using about twelve thousand gallons per quarter. And their total FY twenty-five quarter utility bill would be about two hundred and forty dollars. The portion of this project that is being funded by the rates would bring that up about ten dollars and eighty-four cents in FY twenty-six. And then I think we can move forward. I can come back up with this question, but I think the town manager has some slides he'd like to go over at this point.
Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Snowden. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the long-term capital planning that we've been engaging with the board in over the past few years. We certainly know that we have over one point two million doll- one point two million square feet of space that we're responsible for, for both town and school projects. And we're always looking to maintain those assets, really between the thirty-year and fifty-year window to make sure that they don't degrade beyond any condition that is not habitable and useful for the operations that we provide through those facilities. So as we're looking now, the board has been engaging in conversations about two significant projects. The one that we're talking about this evening and then something that's really in the preliminary stages of the pipeline, which is considerations for an expansion and renovation of the high school. So I just want to acknowledge the fact that we're considering the impacts of these projects as they move forward and what that could look like if both continue to move forward at the current pace. So we are here in April of twenty twenty-five. And we, at the April fourteenth special town meeting, will be seeking the borrowing authorization for the municipal facilities optimization project. If that is approved, and it's approved at the ballot on May sixth, and the project begins, we'll be borrowing funds later in this calendar year. And debt will become due starting in fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. There'll be a minor payment that's made within fiscal year twenty twenty-six. It'll be an interest-only payment. But the the major impact will be within fiscal year twenty-seven. And again, as Mr. Snowden reported, because of so much debt rolling off the books between now and then, the net impact of this project will be an additional fifty-one dollars in comparison to the debt service that's on the books in the current year, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So again, this project keeps rolling forward. There's no tax bill impact until January twenty twenty-seven. The high school project is certainly much less mature, but we've talked about it in public. So how does it play out in comparison to this project and what could the timing look like? If that project moved forward as fast as it possibly could, we would be at a similar phase for that project that we are for this project right now in October of twenty twenty-seven. So that's when a borrowing authorization could potentially be asked. Given the framework of the MSBA projects, that may not happen until the fall of twenty twenty-eight. But I'm providing the most aggressive timeline for you this evening. If we're on that aggressive timeline and we get a borrowing authorization in twenty twenty-seven, there would be no tax bill impact for that project. It's uncertain what that would be at that time. We'd really have to flesh out the scope of work for the project. But there would be no tax bill impact until January of twenty thirty. So when you're looking at these two projects, and this is the work that the select board did so much at at your workshops last spring that you'll recall, is we're cognizant of the challenges that were associated with kind of our lack of planning whenever we took on major capital investments the last time. So we built the Beal School. We we brought the police station on board. And those two projects were really kind of back-to-back in consecutive year tax billing impacts. And obviously, through better planning, we're going to avoid that on future capital investments. And that's what I'm trying to illustrate here. So this project rolls forward. There would be a tax bill impact in January of twenty-seven. But there wouldn't be a subsequent tax bill impact for a capital improvement project until three years after that in fiscal year twenty thirty. So again, subject to some shifts, especially with the high school project, but we're trying to illustrate that gap. Finally, I just wanted to talk about the performance that we've experienced with some of our recent projects. Those two projects that I just identified, the Beal Elementary School and the Police Station and Public Safety Radio Project. We've been very diligent in working with teams like we've selected for this project to build a budget that's appropriate and manage it very vigorously. We've had a lot of success with the construction manager Fontaine, who's also on board for this. So if we look at the Beal Elementary School, we went to town meeting and we requested town meeting allow us to raise almost fifty-nine point five million dollars for the project. In the end, because of a lot of favorable conditions that were at play, we only had to borrow fifty-five point seven, and we only expended fifty-two point nine. So in comparison to what we asked town meeting to allow us to spend to what we spent, we are less than ninety percent of cost and we avoided six point four million dollars in costs because of sound management of that project. Very similarly, but even better when it comes to the Public Safety Radio Project, we requested town meeting allow us to borrow and invest forty-two million dollars. We actually only expended a little less than thirty-six million dollars, eighty-five point five two percent. So we avoided a little over six million dollars cost and cost for that project. So between those two projects, almost twelve and a half million dollars in avoided cost. I'm not saying that that could be possible with this project, but this is our track record and we'll work day in, day out with the building committee and the project team to provide results like this if we can through this project. So we think we have a really solid budget. We know it's been up and down and and having public meetings. We've kind of aired all that dirty laundry and showed everyone as things changed. But this is the real results of our projects. And we hope we can get town meetings a support and approval because of this track record to make this a really important investment that we need for DPW and the town hall space here at One Hundred Maple Avenue. So I will turn it over to Mr. McInerney to to wrap up his thoughts on the the project.
Hello. Usually I'm very animated and I don't usually read from a script. But something strikes me about this meeting and what I, I'm new. Kind of straddling the line here relative to being new and being inside the organization. So I get to witness kind of this collaborative effort. And it's really amazing to me to watch. It's kind of refreshing. Because you guys are being concerned about the taxpayer at the same time you're trying to provide for the future growth and stability of your infrastructure. I just think that's amazing. I don't think it can be understated. So I appreciate letting me be here, be a part of it. Committee, the work you guys are doing, finance committee, all those groups and seeing that iteration, just being new kind of on the outside, it it can't be understated. So I just wanted to add that. I don't think I can add anything to the presentation or the work that the leadership's done on planning for this impact to the tax burden. But I can tell you that every book you read, every, everything you study in terms of a social science or management, communication, ninety percent is non-verbal. I have seven divisions with eighty people. When they're scattered and I can't communicate with them on a daily basis, things are lost. Your vision, your mission, your core values, if I don't see them all the time, I can't embrace that. I can't share it. We can't explore it together. In one location, I can do that. Things that are important to me is to be able to walk around and see people, take corrective action, hold them accountable. So that's the dream. That's why I actually had to write this down. What is the dream? The dream is for me is to be able to address all the staff, eighty-plus employees, at one time relative to the vision, the core values, and the mission, and to give corrective feedback if it's needed, to coach people, to mentor people. And it's going to take a lot of people to watch. There's only ten, ten million dollars in value in that building. But human capital is much more than that. And to protect them and their environment and keeping them safe is hugely important, especially in attracting and retaining talented staff, which you have now. You need to make sure you keep those folks, and I think this building will do that. The other piece is relative to the outreach meetings. There were probably, I counted sixteen, like non, people I've never seen before. We're having more outreach meetings. There's one tomorrow, and there's another one at the senior center and another one on the twenty-third, I believe, twenty-third, twenty-fourth. And and I just encourage people to come out, ask questions, and see the vision, see the leadership that's been provided relative to the the cost estimating, the architectural integrity, the thoughtfulness that this committee's put into this and the select board and the finance committee and the town manager especially, just in terms of keeping people on task and and getting a project to this particular point. And it's been tumultuous. My staff's, you know, one day we're not doing it, one day we are. But you keep persevering and you're trying to do the next right thing. And it, I think it's, I think the project is symbolic of the effort. I think it's, I think the project is symbolic of the effort and the leadership in the community. So not to be speechy, but I really just feel that it exemplifies what you're doing, what will be in that building on South Street. To have us all there, we'll just, I can't guarantee an efficiency, but I know we'll be effective in our delivery of service, because when people from BMD see what the water folks do, and they can communicate right with them, what the resident's feeling or what their expectation is, it's just, it's going to go a long way for the people in the building and the end user is the taxpayer, and that's who we're obligated to serve. So I just want to, I want to focus on that every day, and I try to instill that in the people who work for you, and I think having a building will help us do that. So I appreciate you letting me share. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that's it. We are open for questions.
Okay, I have a couple comments on the slide deck. We've talked a lot about this on March 18th and March 25th. Just a couple thoughts on the deck. We had a pretty extensive conversation, understanding the last slide to me is very powerful. It talks about performance versus budget. Just to clarify the difference between cost estimating at 10% and 60% and why the discrepancy, I think that's important for town meeting members. If they heard, hey, this is $10 million more, what happened? That's a difference between cost estimating and budget. And what the last slide shows is that we've had historical performance, again, and there are other projects we've done too, that we've been under budget and on time, and we have a track record of doing so. Just to clarify that, because that is a question people may ask, hey, were we over budget here? No, we haven't had a budget. We haven't had a project yet. Went from 10% to 60%, and that's now where the reconciliation happened, right? So I think it's important to explain that. And then, Mr. Pitney, something that you had said, I think on the 18th, but clarification about the CM at risk in terms of, how do you know that costs are going to be the costs? And ultimately, for certainty, just to explain that, ultimately, that it goes with cost certainty at a certain point that we're going to have in this, and who is going to be responsible for any increases at that point, at least conceptually?
So because we went through chapter 149A and went with a construction manager at risk, when we go out to bid this project in the fall, and we come back with our bid, that will then be the guaranteed maximum price that we are working with. We cannot go over that, and any cost overruns, it's called construction manager at risk for a reason. They would be at risk for any of those cost.
Yeah, which is an important point, right? So that goes to, hey, how do we know this is going to be at well? This is the process as part of that, so that may be something I'll also talk about as well. But again, just a first point, just to clarify that estimate versus budget, the last slide shows that budget we've historically done very well versus an estimate of 10%, and that does happen, but historical performance as to what we say we're going to do, we've done well. And then CM at risk, just as the, depending on where the conversation goes to town meeting. So why don't I open it up? I have a couple questions as well, but I'll, let me open it up, and I can come back. I know we've talked about it a lot, too.
Well, I'd like my, you know, give my colleagues an opportunity, just because I have so many opportunities, 30 of them recently.
Any questions or comments?
I think, thank you. I've talked to a lot of members of the community about this project and sort of about what, the process that we've gone through in the last month, and I, you know, so appreciate all the work that's been done to get clarification to, you know, on exactly the scope of the project, what may or may not be changing, and to get the financial piece of this together for us, because I had a lot of hesitation about bringing this forward to the, to the public, to, you know, first at special town meeting, and then to the public to vote with, you know, a change, you know, significant changes so close to that decision. And over the last few weeks, there's just been, there's been a lot of work and a lot of clarity that's been brought to the process, and I really appreciate that. I feel really confident about bringing this to the community. It is certainly a worthy project. It is, you know, they're all changes that are very necessary for, for so many reasons for the community. And I want to stress, you know, there have been a few questions about why, why we're bundling the town hall together with, with the DPW building on South Street. And I just want to stress that this is not, you know, it's not, at town hall, it's not a cosmetic renovation. We're not doing, you know, we're not buying like leather couches for the town manager's office. We're doing, you know, life safety upgrades, we're doing system upgrades that, you know, are in, at the end of their useful life and are, you know, set, they could potentially fail on us, and we would have to find emergency funding to, to deal with that. And I don't know if I already said accessibility for the community, which is so necessary, you know, sprinkler systems and hazardous material removal, these are all really important work, you know, it's all really important work that we need to do. And that, the reason why this work is being bundled with the DPW project is really cost savings. By doing these two pieces together, we're saving a significant amount of money going out to the market to borrow funding, and Mr. Mizikar has, you know, explained this really well in past meetings, but just want to reiterate that and just again say thank you for the work that's been done over the last few weeks. It's certainly been a lot of information coming at us, so I think that's all I have for now. I may have more questions as we have more discussion, but thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't really have anything material to add. I think the data speaks for itself. I agree with Mr. Samia about the presentation approach for, for town meeting. I do think that there will be a number of challenges on sort of the budget overrun. And, you know, I agree, I struggled with it as well. I think that what's important to note is that, you know, this is the first time that town meeting is voting on the budget. It'd be one thing if we voted on a budget, and then we came back and said we're well over budget, like, you know, this is very clear what they're presenting on, and I think reinforcing the fact that it's a not-to-exceed will be important to give them reassurance that that will not happen. So I, I look forward to the discussion.
So I think this is playing a good example of that. If you look back just recently, and Fontaine Brothers was involved in this project, the New Dougherty High School, the original budget, they did that under design bid and build, which is chapter 149. The proposed budget was $300 million, and the minute they broke ground, they were $30 million under, and they had to go back to the city of Worcester and ask for an additional $30 million. That will not happen in this case, so that's some of the cost certainty that we're experiencing right now with this project as it stands.
Thank you.
Carl, let's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for the presentation, not just today, but for the past, you know, months of work for this. Mr. McInerney, I really appreciated your comments at the end. I appreciate you elevating our board's concern for the taxpayer as well as the concerns about the future of the operations of the town. I think it's very important that we recommend this article at town meeting and that town meeting, and also residents, continue to engage with the process and attend the public outreach sessions, and continue to, you know, read more information online on the town website. There's a great FAQ page, so I really appreciate the work that's been done for that. I know, Mr. McInerney, you mentioned that having all the staff in one facility, you may not specifically be able to speak to the efficiencies, but I do think that that would be a great improvement to have all the staff in one place to boost efficiency, boost morale. I think that that's really important, that we elevate the human capital, as you had mentioned. So just want to appreciate, express my gratitude for the work that's been put into this. I know it's been, the last several weeks have been a little bit, perhaps, I'm just going to say crazy, just with all the new information that we've received, but I think that speaks to the amount of work that we, that you all have done to make sure that we're doing the right project at the right time. So just thank you for that.
I think crazy is an appropriate word.
I agree with you on the crazy, but I think the crazy really illustrated how nimble everyone has been to be able to respond, and I think the sense of urgency that this project needs to go forward now and not wait for it to be more expensive. I think we spend a lot of time being extremely cautious, right? And here's an opportunity where we have a degree of confidence that this project, the number's the number, this is what we're going to the community with, right? I think to be over cautious on this and wait would be very difficult to explain to residents why we're coming back with the exact same project just at a higher cost. I know the world's uncertain. I don't think it's going to get any more certain. I think our certainty is now, and this is our window of opportunity. Certainly don't want to take any sort of increase to the tax bill lightly. I understand that there are people that simply cannot afford as much as they would like to support this project. For those of you that are on the fence, right, I invite you to come to the public outreach session tomorrow evening from 5:30 to 7:30. Dress warmly, it is cold in that building. So it is, when you see it firsthand, I think it really does help to illustrate clearly the need. No one walks away saying, oh, jeez, these buildings are fine, because they're just, they're really not fine. The concern is always that something's going to fail, and we're going to need to take those dollars out of the operating budget, and then that causes constraints on municipal and school operations, and no one wants that. So by excluding the debt, right, we take that off the table, and we're able to make these necessary investments without straining our municipal or our school budgets. You know, we did have someone come for a public comment to talk about the way that we are proposing to fund this project. And I do support, you know, the split between the utility revenues and a borrowing. And my concern with adding more to the, more of the burden on the utility revenue is that we've made a commitment to a 5% cap on water rates, and I believe the sewer commission has made the exact same 5% commitment. And if we were to take and put a greater burden on the rates, the utility rates, that that is something that would negate the commitment that we have made to the community on that, and I, I don't recommend doing that. Also, I think once you raise utility rates, they rarely come back down, and in this case, when you're using the debt service, you know that the way that our debt is structured, it's going to decrease over time. So I did just want to recognize that we did have a resident come in with an option to consider, but when I was thinking through, I still support this option for funding the project.
I don't have another comment, because you just made a comment that I was going to make, so it keeps it easy. Anything else, Paul? Thank you for your presentation. I know we need to take action here, but I appreciate all of the work that you've done, 30 meetings, coming to several meetings to explain to us, answer a lot of hard questions. Also, part of the community outreach, being available at DPW, the senior center, part of developing FAQs. It's an important role that all stakeholders have been involved. I think that's what we do, really do well in Shrewsbury, is part of this process to make sure that the stakeholders are part of the process and ultimately benefit from the process, and ultimately, we all benefit from the process. And I think that was one of the many reasons that makes Shrewsbury a special place. Part of our strategic plan being for, you know, future-ready, that's what this does, and we have a great track record looking at this business of making sure our capital assets are preserved and refurbished rather than demolished when we can do that. And here, built in '66, ran out in '97, HVAC's 28 years old, well, it's time to replace it, but we still have a great structure here. That's what we do, and we have buildings that last a long time. That's not by accident. It's through thoughtful planning and through great work as part of this due diligence. I personally view this as another one of those projects, and to me, the last slide was one of the most important slides. We do what we say, and we do it consistently, and that speaks louder than any words that can be done. We have great project history again and again, and it's a process that's worked, and I don't think we deviate that now, and this is the time that we do it. So I appreciate all of your efforts. If there are no other comments or questions, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move the board recommend Article 1 on the April 14th, 2025 special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for coming tonight, and thanks for all your efforts. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the 2025 water restrictions in accordance with the Water Management Act permit requirements pursuant to Article 18 of the general bylaws. This is an annually recurring item, and the water restrictions would be in place from May 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2025, and the restrictions involve limiting non-essential outdoor watering hours to before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. There are motions.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act on the proclamation request from Taylor Galusha, Communications Coordinator, Town of Shrewsbury, and Valerie Clemmie, Communications Coordinator, Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations, for Arbor Day and the Arbor Day event.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Didn't hear any opposed, so motion carries unanimously. There are no other items, we'll go to correspondence. Email dated March 21st, 2025, Joan Cronin, 160 Crescent Street, regarding high gas delivery bills. I know the state has undertaken action with utilities with respect to reducing those costs. If we, we could reach out to her and just provide general information as well as information I know that our state representative has undertaken too, so we can work together on that, so noted. Next item is memorandum dated March 27th, 2025, from Nick Repetka, Highway Division Manager, regarding street sweeping report. Always good information in here, and I'll share a little bit, because I can, that their area, multiple areas have been completed, picked up over 200 tons of material and hauled it to the landfill on Route 20. It's a lot of, and this started on March 12th, 2025, and there's a whole list of streets throughout here. Appreciate all the work that's done. So noted. And the final item on our agenda is an email dated April 1st, 2025, from Diane Jones, Tipping Point, regarding SHS National Art Owner Society Climate Display for the month of April, which is at the Shrewsbury Public Library. The display and artist statement went up yesterday, which was late March, and it looks fantastic according to Tipping Point. It's in front of the display, it's as you go into the Shrewsbury Public Library. So noted. That is it on the agenda. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for joining us. We'll see you on Tuesday, April 29th. Good night.